And that's a great reminder to silence your phones. Okay. So, welcome. I'm Jodi Balma with the League of Women Voters from North Orange County. Welcome to the forum and thank you for coming or watching. We are broadcasting this live on the Buena Park City's website as well as on Channel 3/99. So, thank you for watching. Thank you for participating. And I especially want to thank the candidates for participating because without their participation, democracy doesn't work. So, we will begin with a round of applause for all of the candidates. And now that you've gotten that out of the way, that's the last time you'll applaud until the end. So, the candidates are seated in random order drawn by lottery before the event. I'd like to remind you that because of our short time together, we want to get as many questions from you, our audience, to have the candidates answer. Hold your applause until the end. Silence your cellphones and remain respectful of all candidates at all times. Each candidate will start with a two-minute introduction. Then, we will go to questions from the audience where each candidate will answer every question with one minute of time. Our incredible timers will be here to give warnings of 30 seconds and then a stop sign. Answer your response briefly and then we'll go on to the next candidate. All right. Let's start with Mr. Ree, your opening statement.
Yes. Ready?
Yes.
Thank you for inviting tonight. Only one city in California has the word "good" in it: Buena Park. Buena means "good" in Spanish. I am Kevin Ree. I want to keep the Buena in Buena Park, to keep the good and make it better. I'm not politician. I'm accountant. I have the trust of my client to look after their money. Now, I want your trust to look after your money. But that trust must be earned. This is grand jury report. It is critical of Orange County Power Authority. The Buena Park City Council has joined this authority with only three other cities. The grand jury raised serious question about accountability, financial risk, and future rate hike. Now, public safety is my top priority. People must feel safe in their homes, their schools, and their street. We must improve our business climate and grow our tax base. Some are Americans by birth, others like me, Americans by choice. Let me be your choice to be your voice. But I cannot do it alone. Please join me. Together, we'll build a better Buena Park. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we're gonna hold our applause until the very end of the forum. Thank you. Mr. Castaneda, please with your opening statement for two minutes.
Thank you. And hello, Buena Park. My name is Jose Trinidad Castaneda. Might be a little bit too close. And I'm running for Buena Park City Council District 2 because we need experienced leadership at City Hall that truly listens to all Buena Park families and businesses. Sixty years ago, my grandparents came from Zacatecas, Mexico through the Presero Program and worked in Buena Park's strawberry fields. And now, and they had a grandson. I grew up in Fullerton and Buena Park's flower track, attended local public schools, went to Buena Park Boys and Girls Club, prayed at St. Pius Catholic Church for many, many years, and walked to Buena Park Station to ride the bus and train to school and work for years. I've dedicated my life to public service, serving as a council executive policy advisor at the city manager's office in the city of Irvine, a nonprofit board director for a housing nonprofit, and on six local commissions, including Energy, Beautification and Environmental Commission, planning parks, our school district, and air quality. We deserve to be proud of a better Buena Park. As your next council member, I'm committed to make streets and neighborhoods safer, protect clean air and drinking water, increase access to home ownership and senior housing, and support our local businesses while fighting crime. So, I'm proud to have earned the support of Buena Park leaders, including Assemblywoman Sharon Cork Silva, State Senator Josh Newman, Supervisor Doug Chaffee, Buena Park Mayor Sunny Park, Councilmember Connor Trout, and Councilwoman Susan Sonny, as well as our Buena Park School Trustee Rhodia Shade, Centralia Trustee Art Montez, and Human Relations Commission Chairwoman Monique Davis, as well as carpenters, labor. I think the list goes on and on. But you can learn more or contact me directly at 714-264-0763 and visit josetrinidadcastaneda.com. I respectfully ask for your vote.
Thank you. Ms. Son.
Good evening, everyone. I am Joyce Son from District 1. With my extensive leadership experience in serving the Buena Park community and 20 years of professional marketing and management background in IT industry, if elected, I will contribute to this council seat, creative thinking, accountability, and sensibility. I will work hard to ensure that your voices are heard and that those concerns are addressed proactively. As your city council member, I will focus on the following priorities: ensure community safety, support small businesses, maintain physically healthy budget, innovate plans to help our city's economy thrive, enhance senior healthcare services, and keep it local, and education and mentorship for our younger population. For over 16 years as a Lakeside community resident, I served as community leader for Buena Park School Site Councils, PTAs, PTSAs, Sunny Hills Foundation for Education and Nonprofit Organizations. I co-founded a youth group of high school students three years ago who have been dedicated in serving many underrepresented communities. I also served as 2020 Census Field Manager, ensuring that the hardest count populations were represented for our community's fair share of funding and resources. Currently, as a healthcare advisor, I assist eligible seniors obtain access to a Medi-Cal-covered healthcare program. For over three years as Culture and Fine Arts Commissioner, while planning many community events, I helped spearhead our first Buena Park Culture Fest, a citywide celebration of the diversity in Buena Park. I am proudly endorsed by Mayor Sunny Park, Councilmembers Connor Trout and Susan Sonne, and many other community leaders, as well as the Orange County Professional Firefighters Association. I am passionate about serving this community that I love so much, and I will work hard to deliver my pledges. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seabert.
First off, I'd like to thank the League of Women's for holding this. And I'd like to thank the public for coming out and listening to what we have to say. And the best wishes to my opponents here on the board. I grew up in Buena Park. I graduated from Savannah High School, Fullerton College. I spent about 40 years of my life in law enforcement. I started off at the Orange County Probation Department from '80 to '87 and as a Tustin Police Reserve Officer from '83 to '87. And from '87 to 2018, I spent time as a Los Angeles Police Officer. Now, not only that, but I also am a Commissioner for the Parks and Recreation since 2010 to present. So, I have the great experience and, again, the experience of being a high school teacher for the Anaheim School District for 12 years. When it comes to crime, I believe that every criminal should be given a break, some type of social program. But the social programs aren't working. We need to start locking up these people and showing them accountable for what they did wrong. I'm dedicated, trustworthy, transparent, and I'm a problem solver. I work hard for the best interests of the community and not the politicians. I will never attempt to defund the police, but have more police to make the streets a lot safer here in Buena Park. I will end policies that'll drive away businesses, families, and jobs out of Buena Park. I would try to lower taxes and cut through the red tape for our business permits. And most of all, I have the best endorsement. I'm endorsed by the Buena Park, in fact, American Legion. In fact, the commander's here now. God bless him. And I get the support of the military.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Franco.
Buenos dias, Buena Park. Aníos, ¿míngas? Saludos, Carlos. And good afternoon, Buena Park. I won't have a long intro, so I'm hoping to not hit that red mark. I want to thank everyone for being here, taking time out of your day to put this together, to attend, to watch at home. I just want to say that Buena Park, just like very few candidates on this forum, I am the organic choice. I'm homegrown here, attending all local schools from Beatty Elementary to Buena Park Junior High and Buena Park High School. I did attend Cal State Fullerton, but I've always stayed in the same house right here in Buena Park where my parents put their roots down. I don't stand for big party politics. I stand to work for the people here. And the three things that I want to accomplish, that I want to focus on, obviously, listening to you, but it's also clean and safe streets, support for our local schools that have brought up such great people, and focus on our local economic growth. That's how we're gonna get all the resources that we want to have here for Buena Park. So, very respectfully, I'm Carlos Franco, running for Buena Park District 2, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, the first question goes to Mr. Castaneda. As a Buena Park City Council member, what will you contribute to increasing representation and civic engagement in the community?
Again, Jose Trinidad Castaneda. I studied cultural anthropology at Cal State. And what I know is this: We need leadership that is compassionate and truly understands all of our global diversity here in Buena Park. From our Latino community, who has never been represented on our city council, to our Korean community members, who deserve equal representation as well, to every single culture that's here in Buena Park. My plan to build civic engagement is to actually create a program where we partner with local nonprofits to help create new leaders and introduce programs on leadership and civic engagement so that everyone has access to the tools they need to use their voice. Because I'm here to serve all of our community members and to listen. Thank you.
Thank you. The same question to Ms. Son.
Can you repeat the question?
Absolutely. And if any time you need me to repeat a question, I'm happy to do so. The question is, as a Buena Park City Council member, what will you contribute to increasing representation and civic engagement in the community?
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, I have co-founded a youth group, a nonprofit, who's definitely engaged in a lot of civic duties. That includes voter registration, as well as working in the community with Homeless Ministry and working with battered children and additional nonprofit organizations, community organizations, to make good for the city. And to me, the civic engagement comes from the younger age. And if we can help with the current youth commission that we have and also enhance the, basically, to reach out to additional children, youth, and make sure that we get everyone involved to help with the cause, I think that would be one great way to get our younger population started. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seabert.
Yes. What I would do, I would continue the many programs, the successful programs in the city of Buena Park, to get the community involved. I would continue with the senior center. I would continue with the friendly center that feeds the people that need food. I would also continue advertising on the monthly Buena Park calendar of activities for the seniors, for the young and old. I would also continue on watching the Buena Park news community on TV. I would become very active in getting our community active into the city programs, the many programs that we have.
Thank you. Mr. Franco.
Thank you. I'm glad you asked a question about representation and civic engagement. The way I see it is that with civic engagement comes representation. Now, it's not realistic to say that everyone currently does or will engage in our community events. Well, we'd like to offer an opportunity, but most importantly, I'd like to encourage everyone who has an opinion about this to come talk to us so that maybe we, as a city council, as city staff, can address this and offer opportunities for you to be civically engaged. That's how you get representation, because we see you, because you come out, because you shake some hands. So, what I'd like to do is leave that door open, offer those opportunities, and welcome them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ree.
Yes. I have been about four-year commissioner experience in the park and the recreation and history and recreation in the center. We need some better service for the senior program also. I understand the city of Buena Park still hasn't good in the program for the senior and the youth group. But if I became the city council, I want to be a little bit more study with you and I want to make the better program for the city senior and the city youth group people.
Thank you. The next question we'll start with Ms. Son. What is your stance regarding OCPA, which is the Orange County Public Agency, in reaction to energy rates in Buena Park? Power. Thank you. Orange County Power Authority.
Yes, Orange County Power Authority.
Thank you.
My husband and I decided that we're gonna let ourselves, my family, get automatically enrolled in October. And the main reason why is because we want to make sure that we protect the future of our children and to make sure that we have something for them to enjoy later and for the future generation. But of course, different people have different needs. If you feel the pinch, you can actually go on ocpa.org and opt out. There's 38%, 69%, and 100% energy program. You can actually choose any one of those, or you can completely opt out. So, we have choices, and that's what this program is all about. We have choices and we should exercise them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seabert.
Yes. It's a new program. There's a lot of people that have Edison that aren't really sure if they switch over or not. I prefer the new program because it's environmentally friendly, and that's very important now. I believe in the solar, in the wind, in the hydro that this new program offers. Not only does that offer these type of programs, but we're able to control it as a city rather than trying to fight with Southern California Edison. This is run by the cities and we'll have better control.
Thank you. Mr. Franco.
I'm gonna have to dissent. You see, with the new Orange County Power Authority, the city of Buena Park has been automatically enrolled for 100% renewable energy program, which sounds great, but it does come at the cost of our taxpayers. It does come of the people that live in Buena Park that are on a fixed income. And now I have to pay, I believe it's 1.5 kilowatts per hour, percent, 1.5% kilowatts per hour. And it's unfortunate that you're getting the same, assuming same quality of energy for a higher rate. Where's that money going for it to? And quite frankly, I've opted out. I encourage the people of Buena Park to do the research and choose what's best for them. If you're all about the environment, awesome. If you don't feel like paying more, opt out. Quite frankly, it saddens me that the people that are actually on the Citizens Advisory Committee that are supposed to stand up for the people of Buena Park have decided to opt for it without considering multiple perspectives. Thank you.
Mr. Ree.
We have to understand in the Orange County Power Authority, in Orange County has 35 cities, and only three cities join the Orange County Power Authority. Do you know why? You think we saved the money? I'm the professional accountant. I know how I can calculation. We already starting increased our electric bill. You have to receive the new electric bill next year. You can see. So, what I recommend, we need explanation again. We have to be better study. We have to be reading this article more. We have to know. We have to be more explain to our city and our residents because increased in the electric bill. Thank you.
Mr. Castaneda.
I'm fortunate enough to have been endorsed by Sierra Club Angeles Chapter for being one of the county's most, you know, one of the most out there in sustainability advocates, not just in Buena Park, but also throughout Orange County. And Orange County Power Authority is a local not-for-profit, community-choice energy provider, emphasis on choice. The goal is to bring cleaner and cleaner renewable energy at competitive rates and invest in programs that benefit our residents here in Buena Park and our businesses. For example, on the Community Advisory Committee, we're currently discussing how to allocate program funding to increase our chances of fighting climate, or climate change, I should say, and whether that's through subsidies for electric bikes or for Wi-Fi-enabled outlets and plugs that help you understand your energy usage. Orange County Power Authority, oh, Orange County Power Authority is actually going to help us move closer to a more sustainable world.
Thank you. Mr. Seabert. As a Buena Park City Council member, what are your top priorities in decreasing the crime rate and the homelessness crisis in Buena Park?
First off, the crime rate, like I said before, I'll never defund the police, but I'll have more police. I'll have more police on the streets. I would go ahead and make sure that we send police officers to high schools so they could educate the students on what is right and what is wrong. I would, not only that, but I would actually work with the Public Defender's Office. I would work with probation. I would work with other law enforcement agencies to have laws that if you continue committing crimes, you're gonna face the consequences of going to jail because of the fact that I believe in social programs, but they're not working. Look at our crime rate. It's gone up 30%, 40% throughout the state.
Thank you. Mr. Franco.
Thank you. So, clean and safe streets is my number-one goal here in the city of Buena Park. And they are actually in many ways tied together. We need clean streets in order for people to feel safe in many ways. It's like the brick and window theory. You see this happening and it's gonna perpetuate. So, we want to put a stop to it immediately. I'm on the side of making sure that we have more resources for our law enforcement and fire services. How we're gonna get those is not just from funding from thin air. It's a focus on local economic growth. As I mentioned before, we can have these resources by focusing on businesses that are good and able to be retained here in the city of Buena Park. Spend more money in Buena Park, we'll have the money for all the services we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ree.
My public safety is my top priority. People must feel safe in their homeless homes, their school, and the street. I think in the homeless, we have about in Buena Park, about 600 homeless people in this Buena Park city area. We need something making, providing service to these homeless people for those who need it. We need some better service. Also, we need better law enforcement against those who violate our law. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Castaneda.
Can you repeat the question?
I can. As a city, as a Buena Park City Council member, what are your top priorities in decreasing the crime rate and the homelessness crisis in Buena Park?
We need to fully fund and fully staff the Buena Park Police Department. That means more detectives to solve crimes and bring justice for our residents. That means bringing back our gang unit to combat the increasing gang-related crimes in Council District 2 specifically. I worked with our interim police chief to, you know, who created a task force to help address the increase in a homeless gang that was taking over Indiana. And subsequently, with more patrols and more communication within our community, we were able to reduce the crime, get rid of the tagging, and address a couple of things by getting those people experiencing homelessness the resources and help they needed with our social workers. But we also need to bring lighting to District 2. We don't even have as many streetlights as we should, and we have dark streets that aren't walkable. And so, that's what I would plan to do.
Thank you. Ms. Son.
So, we're talking about the crime rate decrease and the homelessness. I agree with Jose that we do need to be fully staffed and fully fund the police department. And the main reason why is because currently we are short-staffed by 11 out of the 95 that is allocated for the police force in Buena Park. And the problem is, it's very hard to get people to apply. So, that said, we do have people that are dedicated for homeless, helping the homeless people in Buena Park. Two officers are dedicated for that, and they would inform them of the Navigation Center that is in one part of the Buena Park in the industrial complex. We do have shelters available, and there are laws that we need to make sure that we enforce. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question we'll start with Mr. Franco. What is your plan as a Buena Park City Council member regarding affordable housing?
Thank you. This is an interesting question, affordable housing, because by no means is it a simple one. I'm in favor of affordable housing. I think people should have a nice place to live, and I think the city of Buena Park should do its best to make that happen somehow. I'm in favor of new development. I'm in favor that there is underutilized land here in the city of Buena Park. Although we're all built out, there are still buildings here that are falling apart that maybe we could tear down and build new things. So, quite frankly, I think the best opportunity for us to do is create jobs here in the city to give people the opportunity to buy a home here as we develop new things. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ree.
We need affordable some house. Yes, I agree, especially in the District 2 area. I think we need rejoining again in our rent because a lot of rent already joining about 10 years ago, 20 years ago. So, even if we make the special permit joining, we need in the rejoining and we have to make the new master planning in our city. Then, we can build in the, as needing the housing apartment, then we can serve in the better than today.
Thank you. Mr. Castaneda.
People born, people born in Buena Park should be able to afford to remain in Buena Park. We have young people living with their families or roommates for longer or just moving out of state. And most people want to be close to their families. Most people don't want to be forced to move very far away. And so, as your council member for District 2, I would bring my just vast knowledge and experience having served on Abundant Housing Board of Directors, having learned and become a subject matter expert on housing in the Housing Game Plan for the city of Fullerton, the SCAG Housing Policy Leadership Academy, and having been endorsed... Fortin, the SCAG Housing Policy Leadership Academy, and having been endorsed by California Action Fund. People across the state should know that with the recent slew of housing legislation, we will have more housing, but it takes a strong leader, a strong negotiator to get more affordable units out of every single project.
Thank you. Ms. On.
As a Commissioner of Buena Park, we've, actually, all the Commissions are updated on the development projects in Buena Park. I know that Buena Park is working hard to meet the state mandate, and currently, the development is in motion for 1,650 residential units under construction or being entitled. These housing units include some affordable housing and are located in various key parts of the city while ensuring quality of life for existing neighborhoods. I can give you a couple of samples, like the senior housing on Valley View, and not in Lincoln. There are additional housing available and on Commonwealth by the airport. We've renovated the airport in to provide permanent supportive housing for Jamboree. All that said, if elected, I will work closely with the city to continue with smart economic development. That will include building more mixed-income housing projects, as well as multi-zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seibert.
Yes. While teaching high school in the Anaheim School District, I ran into a couple of students that were hotel kids. And you know what? It broke my heart, knowing that they had no permanent housing, they had to go from high school to high school, and you know, it really affected not only their education, but it affected them socially, mentally, the problems with not having housing. Not only that, but not having housing, it would affect the whole family. And me as a city council member, I would do my best to work with banks, to work with the city, the county and state, to see if we get lower interest rates for these peoples so they could go ahead and enjoy a comfortable environment, rather not leaving the city to look for jobs. This way, we could go ahead and keep those type of people here in the city because we'll give them affordable housing and jobs.
The next question will start with Mr. Ree. How would you define your role as a city council member in Buena Park?
City council member, we need, my experience, we need more study, we need close to the with the citizens in Buena Park's citizens. Whatever, I think in the role is the Buena Park City Council role. For me, I need to make the better of Buena Park City. Then I need to talk with residents and more talking together what they need.
Thank you. Mr. Castaneda.
To repeat the question.
Absolutely. How would you define your role as a city council member in Buena Park?
As you know, five council seats require three votes to support an action. And so, I plan to collaborate with our council colleagues, collaborate with our city staff, partner with our local nonprofits and businesses to make sure that as a council member representing District Two, I'm listening. And council members are often thought of as politicians, but I am here to be a public servant and serve our community. That means picking up trash from our streets. That means having meetings one-on-one with any resident to learn and listen to any concern that they have. But also, we need to lead. We need to have a plan. Council members who don't have plans will often fall to the wayside and not best serve our residents' needs. But with the experience that I'm bringing and the value that I have to share with Buena Park, I know that we can get more funding because we've identified it and wanted very much to stay under one minute, but these are very long questions.
Ms. On.
I believe the best representation for the city as a city council member is to be able to listen to your constituents and be able to communicate all the current issues, the community issues, to the city council. Number two will be to make sensible decisions with the city staff and fellow city council members. And the main thing is to keep the public's best interest in mind while you're planning, making decisions. And number three will be keep ethics in check. Be able to be transparent and be accountable for all of our actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seibert.
What I would do would, I would be very transparent and show the people that I'm trustworthy, and always, always, I would work for the best interests for the people. I would work as a partnership with other cities, the Board of Supervisors. I would do whatever it takes to go ahead and help the city that I work for to make it a better place to live. I would also go ahead and, not only that, but I would be extremely transparent and get involved in the community. I would go door-to-door. I would advertise. I would do whatever it takes to get the city involved because we have to have a partnership between the city and the people that we serve.
Thank you. Mr. Franco.
My number one goal and my number one role as city council member is to listen to the public, actively listen. And that's why I've worked so hard to go as far as to learn languages that may be a little bit more difficult to learn. I want to listen in your language. I want to know how you understand things. At the same time, it is our role to make decisions on behalf of the people. And even if that means that what's best for the people goes against what we personally feel. That's what I understand is the role of the city council member. With that, we collaborate. We collaborate not just with our colleagues on council, but with people and organizations in the community. Most importantly, we encourage civic engagement because none of this matters if our people don't get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will begin with Mr. Castaneda. As a Buena Park City Council member, what are your top three priorities for development projects?
It comes back to the ability and skill set needed to negotiate more affordable units. For every new development project that's coming down the pipeline, whether it's permanent supportive housing by Jamboree on at the old Airporter Inn, on Commonwealth that I live right next to, or affordable housing at the Buena Park Mall Sears property, we need to have a very deep understanding that the housing crisis in Buena Park and across the state can't be solved alone. And that means making sure we're working with developers to hold them accountable to the standards and vision we have here for our community. And fortunately, I have a strong track record, having submitted many public comments on our housing elements, attended all of our workshops, to make sure that we have a voice for District Two that truly understands our residents' and businesses' needs for affordable housing.
Thank you. Ms. On.
My top three priorities for affordable housing.
So it's development projects? How you want to answer is fine.
Development projects would be number one, affordable housing, obviously. We've got to make sure that the developers that are coming in to the city of Buena Park, we can, we have to encourage for affordable housing portions of that development project. And that we, we need to also provide multiple zoning options as well, so that these affordable housing projects can be in place. Number two would be, we need to enhance our entertainment business so that we can bring more revenue to our city and help our current businesses and create more jobs. So I'd be working hard to make sure that we have, we can collaborate with outside companies to come into our city and help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seibert.
Yes. First off, affordable housing is still one of the top goals. And we need to go ahead and have jobs for affordable housing for our citizens of Buena Park. That should be a first. We should keep our jobs here in Buena Park. Buena Park should be our first, our citizens should be the first that should get jobs that will help our affordable housing. Secondly, we need to work with, like I said before, we need to work with banks, we need to work with other city entities, and that way, it could help us pave the way for affordable housing.
Thank you. Mr. Franco.
I don't know if I have top three priorities, but I'll tell you that I am 100% in favor of developing Buena Park. It creates jobs, and within the creation of jobs, we do have a standing PLA in the city of Buena Park, so we should consider our labor trades that are here in Buena Park first. We have a ton of union workers that live here that should get dibs on some of those projects. So in addition to that, we're developing new housing. There are state mandates for that. So how we do that, I would suggest that we do a mixed-use overlay. It's very common, and building homes next to people's jobs is what's going to reduce traffic and alleviate a lot of other issues that our neighbors are talking to us about. So quite frankly, I'm in favor of development. I'm in favor of creating local jobs, and I'm in favor of bringing the best we possibly can to the city of Buena Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ree.
City need in the master plan again, then we can build in the new mixed unit in the developer. We can bring in a lot of small business in Buena Park, then we can build a lot in the housing. Then city can get the benefit from the city, we can get a lot of tax, in the property tax and license, whatever. We can, we have in the $135 million in the city budget. So we can increase in our budget from new developed project, then city can increase in the addition in the revenue also.
Thank you. The next question will go to Ms. On first. Pensions are a large portion of government budgets. How would you address those obligations with the ongoing needs of the city?
While all, while all cities have long-term debts, such as the pension liabilities, Buena Park has diligently worked on restructuring debts under all-time low interest rate, as far as, from what I understand, while allocating certain funds solely for debts. As part of the, part of a healthy solution towards building reserve and meeting debt requirements while providing the residents with quality of life, the city must continue to be physically responsible and maximize highly-trained staff through extensive training and accountability management. The city council and the management staff will need to work closely with existing businesses also to make it easier to do business in Buena Park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Seibert.
Yes. I would continue working as our finance division of the city of Buena Park. In fact, from what I understand, their pension was at a low 3%. It was one of the best in the county. And I would continue working that way so we could not only save, but we will be as a leader for other cities to go ahead and look at the way and model the way that Buena Park had their pension and the money that we made for our pension.
Thank you. Mr. Franco.
Pensions and ongoing city needs. What that tells me is that we need money to solve these issues. Well, quite frankly, the answer to that is local economic growth. I am 100% in favor of creating more jobs in our community. I'm 100% in favor of bringing good and retaining good businesses here in Buena Park. Remember, the more money spent in our city will give us the sales tax revenue to utilize for our city services, our city needs, and our pensions, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ree.
I'm the only one full-time accountant in my job. Be honest, I need more study for the Buena Park pension liability. So then I can better answer than about this question.
Thank you, Mr. Castaneda.
The question on pension liabilities. Fortunately, I attend and regularly watch every city council meeting. So I know that the city council had recently decided to refinance our city's pension liabilities, and the timing couldn't be more perfect. I mean, it was during the lowest rate, the interest rate in the entire state, and now Buena Park is really leading and being the model city for how we address pension liabilities by timing refinancing of those long-term debts. So now, we must save for the future and spend what we can afford. If we go over and into the red lines, then we are not doing our job on city council. And that's why voting for me, with the extensive experience in finance and city budgets, will help us make sure we balance our budget continuously and grow our reserve fund. Thank you.
The next question will start with Mr. Seibert. Who are your top supporting donors?
You know, is this regarding my campaign, ma'am?
Yes, sorry.
Oh, okay. Well, you know what? I have no donors. I'm a one-man campaign, but I'm endorsed by one of the, I'm endorsed by the American Legion Post of Buena Park, and because of their support, they know I support our military, our veterans, and our senior citizens. And you can't ask for any more better endorsement than that.
Thank you. Mr. Franco.
You know, I'm not too sure who my top supporting donors are because many of them have donated about the same amount, and they're all local people. None of them are big money, no major organizations, no political parties, none of that. So when elected, I work for the people of Buena Park, not for a big party, not for special interests, nothing like that at all. Thank you.
Mr. Ree.
I don't know exactly who is the best in the donor for me, for my campaign, because I have a campaign manager, but I have a lot in the donors at this time. Still, we have a lot in the campaign and the fundraising next in the two, three weeks. So I'm working for Buena Park City Council. Whatever the people make the donor for me, that is the, I understand, they want to be, make me better city council. So exactly, I don't know who was in the top donors, but I know a lot of people make the donors for me.
I'm Mr. Castaneda.
If you're running for local office or any elected office, you should know who is donating to your campaign. And my top donors are all Buena Park-based businesses, families, and individuals. So the list, All-Star Professional Services, GTO Security Corps, California Baking School, the Southern California Pipe Trades District Council Number 16, Plumbers and Steam Feeders Local 582, Orange County Professional Firefighters Local 3635, Women for American Values and Ethics, Individuals Miguel Alvarez, and Assemblywoman Sharon Quirk Silva, my dad. You can, I'm all for transparency. If we don't speak, if we don't want the talk on transparency and ethics, then who are we to be up here and represent our constituents?
Thank you. Ms. On.
My top three donors for my campaign are families and friends and builders trades who believe in my abilities to be the best choice representative. Thank you.
The next question will start with Mr. Franco, and it's a question about transparency and background. Does anyone have a criminal record, unpaid child support, or alimony payments?
You're asking me if I have a record of those things?
The audience is asking about background.
You know what? I'm 32 years old. I don't have any kids. I have a clean record. As a commissioner here in the city of Buena Park, I run through a background check. So quite frankly, when it comes to transparency, honesty, and most importantly perhaps, in this particular case, integrity, I think I'm pretty solid. But hey, I'm not perfect, but you won't catch me with a busted record, I'll tell you that. But hey, I'm not perfect, but you won't catch me with a busted record, I'll tell you that. Thank you.
Mr. Ree.
I have been United States since 1982. I went to the university in United States also. I got in the federal license. Whatever I achieved in the federal license, that I have in the FBI background check. So I don't have any odd in the child support and alimony, anything. I'm very clean background.
Thank you. Mr. Castaneda.
I've never been arrested. I have zero criminal record. I'm an outstanding citizen who has regularly gone through background checks, drug tests. I'm allergic to alcohol, for goodness sakes. I don't even drink a single beer. So for sure, integrity matters here, because I'm the only candidate running in District Two who has a public record of service, there's just community values, serving our public nonstop for the last several years. And unfortunately, there's others who don't have that integrity, who were able to share misinformation blatantly. But as your council member, I'm very, very committed to always sharing the truth with you, always sharing and communicating through multiple platforms, and that's why you don't see any of my social media accounts having been banned for other uses.
Ms. On.
Honestly, if I'm the voter, I would definitely question the motives and intentions of running as city council candidate if you have any criminal backgrounds. Ethics is the issue. The integrity of this position required that you are clean and that you are able to represent all of the residents and businesses in this town. I am happily married for 32 years with two children, adult children. I've worked for federal government as U.S. Census Field Manager. I have been checked for any type of background flaws, and I also currently work as, for a senior healthcare program that is county-approved, so my background is clean. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seibert.
Well-employed for, well-employed by the LAPD, I worked several specialized units. One of them was organized crime and vice. There, we, even working for the city for 15 years, I still had to do a background and a polygraph. I've been, I have credentials from the Secret Service, I have credentials from the FBI, and I was one of 200 officers during the Democrat National Convention when Bill Clinton was president, actually being near him. Also, I have credentials working for the anti-terrorist division as a result of 9/11. So yeah, I have, I have no fear for someone running my background, but I believe that's an excellent idea for every politician that they have their background ran.
Thank you. The next question will start with Mr. Ree. What is your plan for expansion of public services from the city? It is.
Say it again, please, one more time.
What is your plan for the expansion of public services from the city?
Public service means that we have a lot of things, that's a huge in the project. But if I became the city council, I want to be, step by step, I want to be increased in the public service in our community, if I can do best, but I cannot, in the full in the explanation, in exactly in Buena Park, and what kind in the public service do we need exactly at this moment, but if I became the city council, I can be more detailed in the study than I can be service in the better, I can do best in the, for the community.
Thank you. Mr. Castaneda.
I'm very proud of Jim Box and the entire Community Services Department's work. They work tirelessly to provide a number of events and programs to all of our residents, but we need to make sure that we're centering equity and fairness in how we roll out new and existing programs. So we deserve our fair share in District Two, and that means Spanish-speaking, Korean-speaking, Vietnamese-speaking, Tagalog, the list goes on, of all the languages that should be better represented in the events and programs that our Community Services Department already puts on, and making sure that we hire the appropriate staff from within our communities to best represent and engage our communities. And so just, we do have great services, but let's improve on our existing services as well as introduce more cultural competency within all of our services throughout the city.
Thank you. Ms. On.
I think the public service mean, could mean not only just doing programs, but also to be able to provide solutions for the residents and businesses, and one of them is the safety issue, especially in my district. So if there's, if I become elected, I would like to work on providing solutions for the speeders, for the walkways, and maybe come up with something like a CCTV in the area, flashing lights, warning lights for speeding and so on. Our neighborhood is basically a freeway for those people who want to avoid the traffic on Beach Boulevard, so that's definitely one of my priorities. And we would like to, I think we should also address the growing population of seniors in Buena Park and be able to provide more services, especially including healthcare
Thank you.
facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seibert.
You know, one of my projects would be our homeless. You know, we need to go ahead and continue our fantastic homeless program with, with the partnership with the Buena Park Police in our homeless outreach, because they develop a relationship, they're compassionate, and they treat them with dignity and respect. And, you know, a lot of homeless people are homeless because of substance abuse, they lost their jobs, maybe they lost their loved one, inflation. So I give my hats for the navigation center that acts as a temporary homeless shelter, because to me, Buena Park had a vision of a permanent, a permanent transition off the street for our homeless.
Thank you. Mr. Franco.
Repeat the question, please.
Absolutely. What is your plan to expand public services from the city?
Awesome. So there are public services that the city already has, right? Fixing our streets, sewers, et cetera. Capital improvement projects already have an allocated budget in order to sustain those public services. Now, if we're talking about expanding on the already-existing services by some projects that residents could get involved with, well, quite frankly, that's tied directly to civic engagement. We want people to come out, because the last thing we want is for the city to invest dollars, taxpayer money, on programs that are going to be under or not at all utilized by the community. So let's inquire, let's encourage people to get involved, and then respond by allocating funds to expand on those projects. The answer to that goes back to local economic growth. Thank you.
Thank you. The last question from the audience, we'll start with Mr. Castaneda, and then we'll end our forum with closing statements. So, the last question. What is the biggest need in your district?
Housing. Housing, 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 housing. We need to build more homes for our existing residents who are two families in a two-bedroom apartment, or if you've driven on Stanton, or you live nearby, like I do, there's an apartment building that hasn't been rebuilt in, since Christmas, since Christmas, yeah, Christmas Eve. And that, to me, is not acceptable. The biggest need in District Two by far is housing and affordable housing at that. So we need strong leadership with real experience to help address this, because this is not going to be solved overnight. This is going to be solved over the course of many years. And without that leadership steering at the helm of this ship, then Buena Park is not going to be able to address the biggest priority for District Two.
Ms. On. What is the biggest need in your district?
I think I already mentioned it. My district one is the northern part of Buena Park, where we have a lot of homes, single-family residential homes, and a lot of stop signs. People do run stop signs, they speed on the 25-mile zones, like to 40 miles or so, and it's unfortunate that when the police is there, you know, briefly, it can be stopped, but it just continues when they're not around. So I think we definitely need a solution for this problem that we have, and we also have some homeless issue, homelessness issue as well, in our, especially at nearby the Rosecranton Beach Boulevard. So I would really like to go to work on these issues, solving these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seibert.
Well, I think that one of the biggest issues is the traffic on Beach Boulevard. I don't care if you're going north or south. If you're leaving in the morning, going southbound on Beach, it's all bumper-to-bumper. If you're coming back home and you're going northbound on Beach Boulevard, it's still bumper-to-bumper. We need to work, if I was a city council member, with our traffic division and possibly the county to see how we could alleviate this problem with our traffic. The second would be the Rite Aid building that's abandoned over there in Rosecranton Beach. If you believe in the broken-window theory, which I do, we need to go ahead and correct that and make something of it, because the last time I seen it, it was, it's been vandalized, and the homeless are staying there, and when you have the homeless staying there, you're going to have a lot of substance abuse.
Thank you. Mr. Franco.
If I were to narrow down the most important need that I see from listening to my neighbors, I live literally two blocks away from here, and that's clean and safe streets. Again, those are tied together. If you have an issue about housing and increased populations, that's all great. A lot of great ideas, but how do we really get things done? And how we get things done is that the more people that there are, the dirtier the streets could be. And making sure that we sustain that cleanliness, making sure that we fund our public safety whenever there is crime, as it has been rising, whenever some of these new houses have been set on fire, we have to make sure that clean streets and public safety is our number-one priority. After that, funding it goes down to economic growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ree.
I think we have a three major, my district one in the, we need a major three. Number one, we need in the traffic control. We need in the some, especially in the beach and the Marvin area, they have a lot of traffic in the issued. So we need in the hired new engineer, we have to make them how we can solve in the this traffic control. And number two, we need in the public safety. Public safety means that we have about 600 homeless people in the, this area, especially Beach area has a lot in the small business that area. So that people lot of crime, make the crime. So we need to contact with the police station, we have to make the better solution about this. And number three, we need in the economic development, which means I want to bring the lot of small businesses, make the new policy, then we can make, we can increase in the, our revenue, city also.
Thank you. We'll start with Mr. Franco with closing statements for one minute each in reverse order of our opening statements. Mr. Franco.
Fantastic, thank you. Thank you for everyone for attending. This has been fun. Thank you for everyone watching out there, I really appreciate you tuning in. Lastly, I want to let people know that I'm your organic candidate. I have grown up here, I look out for you, and my leadership style stems from listening to, struggling with, and collaborating with each and every one of you. With your own idiosyncrasies, with our own cultural biases, it's okay. And no matter where you are in life, there's a place for you here in Buena Park. So I'm happy to welcome all people to Buena Park, people that have been here their whole lives, people that just moved in. So with honesty, integrity, and transparency, don't believe the hype. I'm here to serve you, the general public of Buena Park, not any special interests. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seibert.
Yes. First off, no one has mentioned this, but we need to go ahead and think for our junior high or high school and our college students with the FEDNOW epidemic that's going around. It's 50% more dangerous than heroin and 100 times more potent than morphine. We need to get together with the law enforcement, the county health department, and we need to go ahead and have Norcon given to every high school, junior high, and even college. The nurses should be taught that, because we see on the news it's affecting our young, and no one's doing anything about that. But we need to go ahead and take care of that problem by issuing Norcon to all the local high schools and junior high. And not only that, but we need to go ahead and work on active shooter.
Thank you. Ms. On.
I would be privileged to represent this community that I love, and I look forward to working with all Buena Park residents, businesses, and the city staff to continue to move Buena Park in the right direction. We need to continue to increase efficiency and accessibility to public services and resources for residents and small businesses, manage transparency and accountability, provide equitable economic solutions, and keep focused on public safety with the best interest of the community before anything else. With this formula, I believe that our community can live, work, and thrive in our beloved city, the center of the Southland. I'm grateful to be endorsed by many community leaders, and I would be honored to receive the District One residents' vote of confidence as well. Please stand with me, Joy San, and vote for me as your District One City Council on or before November 8th. You can also connect with me through my website, joysan.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Castaneda.
To my community, gracias, salama, castaneda, gam un, and ASL as well. Thank you for attending tonight and for watching and tuning in. My name is Jose Trinidad Castaneda, and I'm asking you to vote Jose, your first and best choice on the ballot for city council. I'm grateful and humbled to have been endorsed by the veterans, firefighters, all the labor unions, local Buena Park businesses, and most importantly, Buena Park residents and families. We deserve the best. I'm committed to bringing our voices to city hall, and as your council member, I want us all to remember that we are public servants. We must empower our residents in demanding good governance through greater efforts at civic engagement. It would be an honor to represent all of our wonderful and diverse community members, and feel free to contact me directly, visit my website, josetrinidadcastaneda.com.
Thank you. Mr. Ree.
Thank you to the League of the Women Supporters for hosting tonight's candidate forum. Thank you to the many candidates offering their service to the city. Of the five members of the Buena Park City Council, shouldn't at least one be an accountant. If you agree, please vote for me, Kevin Ree, for city council. Thank you.
Thank you. I now will allow the audience to applaud. A few announcements before we leave. First, the FCC requires that any recording of election forums that are not online or on our city television, which are of course fully broadcast, be fully broadcast. No editing or splicing is allowed. I want to thank everyone who made this forum possible, including our incredible timekeepers who kept us on time, our question sorters and our greeters, and of course, Linda Lockwood, who has worked tirelessly to organize all of the North Orange County forums in our eight cities that we service. I want to thank the tech crew that made this possible to be broadcast online, the city clerk who helped organize this, and of course, the candidates who showed up and answered our questions. Applause. If you had a question that didn't get answered, I hope I hope you'll stay and talk to the candidates. Special thanks go out to the audience for showing up, for everyone watching. And I want to make sure that you know where to find other resources because the League of Women Voters is committed to not just registering people to vote, but to ensuring that people are engaged and informed. So go to the League of Women Voters North Orange County website. We have a YouTube channel that has recorded pros and cons for the seven statewide ballot measures. We also have a statewide easy voter guide that is available. And of course, our Voters Edge tool that can help you compare candidate statements from all of the candidates who will be on your ballot, available at cavotes.org. Thank you so much for engaging in democracy. That's it.